Welcome to the June 25, 2024 City Council Work Session. I'd now like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the agenda overview.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. This afternoon during our work session, we have the privilege of having a couple of different briefings, one of which, the first of which is from our Downtown Lynchburg Association, DLA that we call it. We have our Director, DLA Director, Ashley Kirchner and Board Chair Chris Boswell. Way there. Then a Sheltering Services, you'll remember a couple of weeks ago, we had Sarah Corin Toto. I always struggle. Sorry, sorry, Sarah. And then she presented and talked to you about the miriam of the different services that we have to help some of our most vulnerable. As a follow up to that, I have Kent White, who's here, that's going to talk to you a little bit about the Sheltering Services and where we are now, because we told you there were some transitions, some things that were opening and closing, and it's been really hot out. And I think we've served upwards of 600 plus people with our cooling shelters. So that's really, really good. So and then we have business item briefing briefings. What are those? Those are those items that we'll eventually come back to for your vote. But we take time to provide you the research, the feedback input, allow you to ask questions so that when you get to that vote, you're informed and ready to make your, your decision. I will highlight, we do have a, our GALTC Director, Josh with us, and also GLTC Board Chair. Got it right. Okay, good. So I acknowledge those. And then we have a closed session that'll happen after your roll call. And with that, Madam Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to our work session agenda items, our Downtown Lynchburg Association 2023 Annual Report Presentation by Ms. Ashley Kirchner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Let me just make sure I've got my presentation up here. Okay, great. So thank you for having me today. I am here to talk to you about our 2023 Annual Report. It is June, so you may be wondering, why are we talking about 2023? You guys are very busy in spring talking about budgets. So we held off and we're here to tell you a little bit about what happened last year. But since we are mid-year, I'm also going to talk to you about some things that have already happened this year, as well as what you can expect for the rest of the year from Downtown Lynchburg Association. So I've been up here many times in front of you all, but I do want to do a quick refresher about who we are, how we're structured and what we do. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and for 25 years, we have worked alongside the city toward downtown revitalization. Our mission is to create a strong, vibrant, and welcoming downtown. And we do this through a number of projects and programs that change every year depending on really what downtown needs. We have 15 board members right now. That board is made up of downtown stakeholders. They represent large businesses, small businesses, restaurant, retail, hospitality, arts community, all types of downtown stakeholders. And they help guide the direction of this organization and overarching, you know, what are our goals on an annual basis. We also have a staff of four, as you can see up there, short women and tall men is what our staff is made up of. We also are an accredited member of the Department of Housing and Community Development's Virginia Main Street Program, and also the National Main Street Program, which is a part of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And we also are a member of International Downtown Association, an award-winning member. And the reason we are members of these organizations is they give us incredible resources and education that we are able to grab and take back to us and bring to this community. I just got off a webinar with International Downtown Association, all kinds of additional events for holiday programming here. So these are really important entities that we are a part of and we, we take back with us. So before I get into the work of last year, I just want to kind of, you know, put in a nutshell, what's important about the work that we do and how we work with the city. We leverage the volunteer power, the financial contributions of individuals, of companies, sponsorships, and grant work from all over to do more than the city could do alone. So with your partnership, we leverage your partnership with other resources, and we do more than we could do on our own. And I think that's the way to look at our work and our partnership as we move forward. So these were our 2023 strategic priorities, storefront business support, place making, activation and programming, marketing promotions and branding, and advocacy as always for our downtown business community. So I'm just going to hit the highlights. I'm not going to talk about everything that we do. Give me a second, our clicker is struggling a little bit. Hang on, I gotta figure out how to go back. Ooh, it rolls. Okay. So last year was a brand new program for us. And I know, I think I've spoken about this in council before, but I just want to remind you what this program was and, and where it's going. So last year, we received a grant from the state, the Community Business Launch Grant. And that grant gave us the seed funding to start a new program that we felt like we had needed for a long time. I'm always talking about storefront vacancy. I will continue to talk about storefront vacancy until that number goes to a much more comfortable number. I want to be sub 10%. So hopefully I'll be back here reporting to you all that we were under that number sometime in the future. But at the time that we did this, we were north of 22%. I think when we first started talking about this, we were at 25. So that means that 25% of storefronts that you walk by are vacant. Think about that from a visitor perspective. You all walk, you know what it looks like, and you know what, what adding new businesses to downtown would mean. So we wanted to actively find a program that would help make that happen. So the Community Business Launch Program gives entities like ours funds that can then be funneled into a program to encourage new entrepreneurs to bring ideas, to workshop those ideas, and eventually pitch them for funds to then go into a downtown business. So in the first year, we had over 100 applicants. We allowed 25 to participate in the program. Those applicants go through an eight-week education series that is administered by the Small Business Development Center, Lynchburg Region, which is housed in the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance. So after those eight weeks, most businesses decide to pitch their idea. Some say, some realize that, you know, they probably shouldn't continue with that idea, which is also a valuable experience for them. So we had, I believe, 18 people pitched the first year. We selected five that you see here, and I'm happy to report that these five businesses, four of them are already open in downtown, and one will open this fall. So with that program, we filled five new storefronts in downtown Lynchburg. And what's even more exciting is that a couple of weeks ago, we awarded our second round of funding to the businesses that you see here. So the, oh, actually, I'm sorry, I'll be really quick, but I just want to make sure you know what these are. So Wolfman Productions is going to open this fall. This was an Appomattox Theater Company that decided to relocate their indoor location to downtown Lynchburg. Super Rad Arcade Bar is open on Ninth Street now, and it is obviously an arcade bar, but it's very cool if you haven't been. Prem is a plant store, which is now open at 409 Fifth Street. Mosaic Collective and Threaded are now open at 1212 Main. And Easy Speak Dance Hall and Events is now open at 409 Fifth Street. So a couple of weeks ago, we awarded our second round. This was a very strong round of candidates. We had even more applicants. We had really people that I think had been looking at this program and ready to apply. So I am so proud of this group of recipients. The Yard on Fifth is going to be a barbecue and soul food restaurant in the old Fifth and Federal. So filling a very important building on a very important corner. It will have live music and really be a community gathering space. So we were proud to support that one. Honeybees is a baby clothes store that is actually going to go into a recently vacated store. So that storefront had been filled for a long time. Those that ran it retired and were really happy to be able to immediately fill that storefront. Squared Biscuit Company is going to be biscuits. I don't really need to explain that. Frostfire Sauna and Cold Plunge, exactly what it sounds like. It's a very cool trend that's happening right now. It's really about health and wellness. And then Fire Brick Pottery is actually going to be a pottery supply store. Kiln Firing Services, there is a retail component, but it's really more of a service. So when you look on here, part of our job now is that two of these have locations, but our job is to also take those that don't and say, okay, what do you need? What is your square footage? Let's put out all of the options for you. We're going to introduce you to all of the developers, all the property owners, and let's find the best space for you. So that's what we're doing with three of these now, and that kind of, that's where, that starts their journey in terms of finding their home. And then I am actually happy to report that on Friday of last week, we received a press release from the Governor's Office that this program has been sponsored and funded for a third year. And we are surprised by that, not because we're not proud of the program, we think it's impactful, we know that it is. But there was, there was only a total of $200,000 available for the entire state grant, and we got 100,000 of it, which was the largest grant, which was the largest grant given to any municipality in the state for any of the three grants that were announced. So we're really proud. What this means is that the end of this program, which I should also mention that the city is a partner on this program, the Office of Economic Development sponsors this program as well. At the end of this program, we will have put 15 new businesses in downtown storefronts, which is something that we're, we're really very proud of. So we're looking forward to doing more of that. Last year, we actually took over the Downtown Lynchburg Loft Tour as well. It used to be something done by the Free Clinic of Central Virginia, but they had let it go, and it hadn't happened in a couple of years with COVID and a number of other reasons. So we wanted to bring this back. This is a great way to showcase downtown urban living. It's a great way to show people what's changed, what has been developed. A lot of people have no idea what's going on in these buildings and are always just really so excited to see them. So our first year, we had a modest goal of 300 tickets, and we sold that, we sold 298, but we're going to call it a win. And a lot of those people went in and spent money at businesses, and you know, that's really part of the goal of that. And then this year, we had a 33% increase in ticket sales, and we're up to 400. So what we see is this is going to grow. People look forward to it every year. We may even add a second one at some point. It's just a great way to get people to see the growth and development in these buildings. So Fireworks on the Riverfront was also a big 2023 event for us. It grows every year. Last year, we estimated around 5,000 people. We're in the park and on the Bluff Walk. It is free. It is family friendly. It is open to anyone. And that's the kind of event DLA really specializes in, is how can we bring people down here to gather and just be together as a community? So this is a fantastic event that we hope to continue for many, many years. I will say that we are doing it this year. Mark your calendars, July 5. We know the park is under construction right now, and I just want to say thank you to all city staff who are, they are bending over backwards to help us make this happen. We are going to be not only using the half the park that we have, we're going to be using the parking lot behind the water dog to ensure that we can fit as many people down there. We're establishing some secondary locations. We want to make sure that our community doesn't lose this new tradition for the next two years as the park is under construction, because both of those things are good, and we want them to continue for sure. I forgot to mention too, last year, 47% of the attendees to fireworks did not come from inside the city limits. So this is clearly something that's drawing people in, not only from the surrounding counties, but also from afar. And I think something that people bring their families in to see as well. So that's something that we obviously like to see. I've been hearing reported out on this, so I won't spend too much time on this. But the Bright Nights installation that we did last year, as well as the Bright Nights Block Party, which is the event that kicks it off, was obviously a big part of our year and something that we put a lot of time and energy into. Again, free and family friendly, filling the need for more holiday events in downtown and the community as a whole. It was a four-block street festival, again, around 5,000 in attendance, 60-plus vendors, you know, just so many fun and beautiful and exciting things happening, and just a time that people can come together and enjoy the holiday season and, and kick it off. And what it kicked off was our eight-week installation on the Bluff Walk. This was a project that came about with a $75,000 grant from the state. The city invested 50,000 into equipment that goes toward that as well. And then we raised around $85,000 to help make all of this happen as well. So it was a big project. It's the biggest we've ever done. But I think you know from the report outs that we've had before that the economic impact of this was, was pretty striking. 259% increase in bluff walk traffic year over year, a 17.5 increase in downtown visitation overall, a combined economic impact of $417,000. And again, this is direct from the surrounding businesses of those restaurants surveyed on Commerce and Jefferson. The average sales increase in that period of time versus the previous year was 49%. So we know that this was highly impactful, both from a quality of life standpoint and just kind of the joy around the holiday season, but also from an economic impact standpoint. So this is going to be a flagship event moving forward. Thank you for continuing to invest in that with an investment of 50,000 again this year for additional equipment. And, you know, hopefully we'll continue to be able to work together on that in the future. We look forward to that. So the last project I want to mention last year, Art Alley, for those of you that were not on council in 2021, Art Alley was a project that, again, we worked with state funding and local funding to create a new public space in a previously underutilized alley. I don't have before and after photos here because I'm not going to go back that far. But it has since become a, an attraction. It is featured in all kinds of state, local, and national publications. And it's a beautiful place, but every two years, we'll give it a refresh. We repainted the street. We added two new murals on the garages adjacent to it. And we will always be, if you see the gallery on the bottom right there, that is a rotating art gallery. So we put out a call to artists. Every two years, they submit their work. A panel of judges selects the, I believe, 13 pieces, and then we hang new art. This year's selection was, or last year's selection was pretty incredible. We have a lot of talent in this community. So we'll keep doing that. I'll always mention our marketing and promotion because we can do all kinds of public investment in infrastructure, private investment, bringing new businesses down, place making in public spaces, but if people don't know about them, it doesn't matter, right? So this platform that we have with our 30,000, excuse me, I'm forgetting my numbers all of a sudden, 20,000 Instagram followers, 20,000 plus Facebook followers, our email audience, all of our media partnerships. We make sure people know what's going on down here. We make sure they know what's new. We make sure they know what is happening on a weekly basis, and we make sure that they can see the growth and the change so that they can come down here and see it for themselves and continue to visit. So that is a big part of what we do. And then lastly, there's just a lot of things that we do that are small, that are all about keeping our businesses down here in an environment where they can be successful. Small Business Saturday and other retail promotions, downtown business meetups and communications to make sure they know each other and can collaborate. And the Downtown Lynchburg Gift Card Program, which at the end of 2023 had seen over $100,000 directed directly into our downtown businesses, which is something we're very proud of. So before I go on to what's next, just want to mention where we were at the end of 2023 in terms of kind of state of downtown. One of the biggest measurements we have to determine the growth of downtown is the taxable receipts. Essentially, it tells us how many people are eating, staying, shopping, and playing in downtown Lynchburg, and we want that number to grow. So you can see the growth of last year. Obviously, more and more people were doing that. I also want to mention total assessed value. I should have fiscal instead of calendar on there because that is how it is assessed, is fiscal, according to Jeff. He would want me to say that. And so you can see that increase as well. And, and, you know, property value increase is a really, it's what he looks at is how many properties are being developed, right? He's looking at redevelopment. And so, you know, we're actually meeting in a couple of weeks. We're going to talk about all the redevelopment that's going on over the next year. But so when I look at that number, I see, I see growth and change and redevelopment, which is a really important factor to look at. And then lastly, want to let you know what you can expect from us in the next couple of months. We're going to continue everything that I mentioned. So everything on there is an ongoing program. We're also restarting our downtown movie series. We didn't do that last year because we had thought the construction project was going to start. So we're bringing it back this year despite the construction. We're just going to work around it. We're just going to, you know, go in another location. So we have a six-night movie series. It is free and open to the public. It is family friendly, and we're excited to get that started the weekend after Fireworks on the Riverfront. There are a lot of Main Street beautification efforts we also have funded for the year. So we received a grant last year that is going to help us do a number of things on Main Street. One of them is looking at all of the blighted properties and the vacant properties that just don't look great, right? Walk down the road, and we kind of have clusters of things that make it look like we're not growing and we're not changing and we're not successful. So in those locations, we have partnerships with the property owners. So we will do storefront cleanups. We will do large-scale vinyl decals in the windows that will be artful, artistic, might even be interactive. We're looking at a lot of different things to make them beautiful and exciting when you walk by. We think that that will make an impact. Another component of that grant is we actually have $50,000 set aside as micro grants for small businesses. If they want to do their own facade improvements, if they want a new sign, if they want to do large-scale planters, if they want to repaint their facade, we want to be able to help them do that. We don't always have to be the ones doing, and they have to actually match that. So if they want a $3,000 micro grant, they have to invest 3,000 as well, which I think is a nice give and take for that. Downtown Restaurant Week, we're going to be starting that as something new with the downtown Lynchburg restaurants. We're going to be partnering to put that, that together in January, which is a time that is very dead, frankly, not a lot going on. So we need to draw people down here, just give them a reason to come down and spend a little bit of money. And then last year, lastly, we also, I guess it was almost only a month ago now, we received a $60,000 planning grant, Lord, sorry, from the state. And that planning grant is just going to allow us to do some more planning efforts around vacant and underutilized properties on Fifth Street, which is now actually part of our boundary. So I think that's it. For me, I'll also just mention too, one of the things we're doing behind the scenes is always trying to actively recruit businesses to open second and third locations in Lynchburg. We're doing that right alongside economic development right now. We've got a couple of great prospects, so we're really excited about those efforts. So outside of that, I just want to say thank you for allowing us to present. Thank you for the support and the partnership that you've given us. I think, you know, doing this stuff together is really how we're going to move forward as a city, and we appreciate your vision with that. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Dr. Wilder?
Thank you. Appreciate it. I mean, it shows the vitalization that we have downtown over the past several years. I mean, your organization's really been at the forefront of making sure they continue to go forward. So thank you for supporting the businesses. And I'm so happy to see the governor understand the importance of downtown investment. With the grant last year, now another $100,000, that just shows the governor is invested in our community, and he realized the importance of investments in downtown. So I really appreciate that. And also the funds you have set aside for the downtown cleanup storefronts. I mean, that's really crucial because you see a few, maybe have some challenges. So again, to have some funds for that to help unify those projects is really great. And the Lynchburg, the Lynchburg one, the Launch LYH, I went to one last year. I missed the ceremony this year. I think I had to park another commitment. But again, if you haven't gone to that, that is amazing when they give out the awards to the businesses. I'm really excited about the one coming up Fifth and Federal, because that area is just a special area to the African-American community especially. And to see the organization come to life and come there to that location, that really means a lot to our community. So I was so happy to see them move. I've talked with the owners, totally how excited we are, looking forward to the opening of the location. So we're really glad for that. So thank you for your work in our community, and thank you for continuing to revitalize downtown projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a request.
Yes, sir.
I want Chick-fil-A downtown.
Have magic fairy dust, but I will, I'll take that in. I do too. Council missions?
What percentage of funding for DLA comes from city government?
Yeah, that's something I should know offhand. I can get that back to you. But the, the support that comes to DLA from the city is, is my salary. We don't have any other general operating support. The funds that went to the Bright Nights and the Bluff Walk didn't come to DLA. They just directly purchased and procured items. Yeah.
Okay.
But I can get you that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for a wonderful presentation. Again, really wonderful numbers, all, all going in the positive direction that make us happy for the investment. So thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Sheltering Services, Mr. Kent White.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. As Mr. Benda said, the continuum of care was here earlier this year, providing an update on homelessness in central Virginia. At that same time, it's hard to believe it was January. The city had just stood up two emergency warming centers due to cold temperatures to protect our most vulnerable residents. The expectation coming out of that presentation was that we would come back with you because things were, as Mr. Benda said, were kind of still in flux. We were seeing transition both in sheltering and how we were and what those operations for warming looked like. As I do the recap, the first three slides that you'll see belong to the continuum of care. And I want to acknowledge that Olivia Brown Coles is in the audience with, from Miriam's house. Ms. Brown Coles is the Director of Homeless System Coordination, and is always such a great asset to this community. So, so to quickly recap where we are, where earlier this year, the main takeaway from the continuum of cares, January presentation, while overall homelessness is going down in central Virginia, the number of unsheltered residents is increasing. The increase is primarily due to a reduction in capacity at area shelters. And we've seen this change primarily since 2021. And we've seen this change primarily since 2021. The Salvation Army had some renovations that changed their available capacity. And then we had the closing of Hands of Launch. In addition to that lack of shelter capacity, increased housing costs and decreased, and decreased affordable housing stock compound the issue. So basically said another way is that people are remaining homeless longer because it, it takes a lot more to get in to permanent housing at this point. The continuum of care did identify some of the opportunities that were ongoing. The Florida Terrace Development was, was kicking off. It is now up and running with eight units that directly support the homeless population. And council has some programs, there were some teasers that were kind of out there about some programs that you're doing. And a lot of that is the reason that we are before you today because this update, the timing of it, we want to make sure that you kind of know the proposals that are coming before you over the next and, and kind of the level set of where we are right now. So we, we kind of talk about what the lack of shelter capacity is and what it was doing at the time. This warming center was, was not something that was on the city's horizon on, on either year, but we've had some cold snaps. Particularly, we had, we had previously counted on Salvation Army to, to run the shelter, but they had not had staffing to do this since 2023. And so with that series of cold nights, both over the holidays and then we had eleven consecutive nights that we've had to open so far this year. While this temporary effort was successful from the standpoint of that we were able to get unsheltered residents out of the cold. So that's a good thing. We also kind of reported back that it's not sustainable. There are not resources available to stand up an extreme weather center. So you may recall, we, we did this with Salvation Army, we did this with Miriam's House, we did this with Interface Outreach. It was volunteers coming together, but at the end of the day, you need shelter managers, you need outreach, you need, you need resources that just didn't exist, so it wasn't sustainable over the long term. So since that time, we, we have worked with our partners to conduct an after action review. Basically, it's a lessons learned from the warming center, the things that we, that kind of came to our attention, both in the immediacy and long term. One point was that about a third of the guests at that center were not part of our homeless response system. So that kind of tells you two things. One is that you're starting to see that impact of not having available shelter beds. Because, because people, because their shelters were full, they were having to come into our warming centers. They did not have, you know, a, a permanent bed to, to sleep in or a bed available to them at the ready. The other thing is what we would call situational homelessness, things like power outages, unsafe housing. All of these are often contributing factors to people being homeless for a period of time. And of course, it's accentuated when we have really cold weather. We also know that the center is a great, it was a great resource to connect people with the community. And again, having Miriam's House, having Interfaith Outreach, helping the Salvation Army. We were able to connect people with resources, both to keep them in their housing at that time, which is the primary goal, or to connect them long term with resources to figure that out. And then I, I can't say enough about a street outreach team. Again, volunteers who are out in the community, trying to make people, make sure people are aware of the warming center and the resources that were available. They did an incredible job on short notice in cold temperatures. But what we know is for a warming center or for any extreme weather center to be successful, that the message has got to be blanketed and that starts with having consistent hours, temperature thresholds, known facts that people are, that people know where to go in this, in a case of an emergency like that. And again, as good as this effort was, we still saw towards the end of that eleventh day, you still had new residents and guests coming in saying, I didn't know this was available, I wasn't aware that I could come, that sort of thing. So, so that's something, that consistency is important going forward. I'll also say that City Council, you approved at your last meeting, resources through community development block grants and the home program, two of which directly impact homelessness. One is work with Miriam's House and Central Virginia Continuum of Care to provide that coordinated homeless intake and access system. It's called CHIA for short. The idea there is, again, those are the resources that hopefully prevent a, a person from experiencing homelessness early on. And if they do, helping to connect them with resources in the community. The second is, is new. You heard us and we, we certainly appreciate partnering with Miriam's House. Their intent is to put a request for proposals out into the community over the summer to try to have a community partner run a warming center more consistently. And you provided some initial funding for that. So, and then the last thing is we'd kind of given you an update at that time on what sheltering capacity looked like. Unfortunately, I would say we've, we've taken a step back there. Following that presentation, Roads to Recovery announced that they would not be able to sustain their, their reset shelter on Fifth Street. They, they did work, they did a extra work to make sure that it stayed open during the winter months, but it will close on June 30th. So what that means long term is from 2021, instead of down twenty-six percent, will be down forty-two percent of our area beds. The other thing to note is we've recently learned that the Salvation Army has done some unplanned renovations to their facility and are not admitting new guests at this time. We tried to find out what the timeline for that renovation is, but a, a lot of that's handled at their, at their corporate level. So we, we don't yet know that timeline of when they'll start re- admitting guests into Salvation Army. Mr. Bendis talked about the cooling centers. So just a quick shout out, this is something that we worked with Salvation Army to quickly stand up. Six hundred, over six hundred guests have used these services. It's a respite, right? Get in, out of this extreme heat, hydration stations, that sort of thing. Because it's, as weird as it sounds, talking about warming centers in the middle of, in late June, when it's a hundred degrees, we know extreme weather doesn't stop, right? So we're, we're trying to kind of balance the both across. And then just looking ahead, we want to make sure you're aware of what's coming before you. So I've already mentioned, Miriam's House will issue that request for proposals for a community partner to stand up a warming center, hopefully over this winter, if we can find takers. They've incorporated our lessons learned from that after action review into that proposal of some of the things that we're looking for. And City Council, we're aware that tonight you have a zoning petition. You'll also have another one of the, for shelter, and then you'll have another one later this summer for some affordable housing unit. Notwithstanding those or outside of those, you're also going to consider some home American Rescue Plan funds. It's been a minute, but you may recall that a mobile walker had talked about this program. These are some federal funds independent of your community development block grants and home funds specifically around homelessness. By your vote, we did a request for proposals for additional affordable housing units in the city. That has been reviewed by the Community Development Advisory Committee and that recommendation will come for you, before you later this summer. And then looking ahead even further out, believe it or not, our five-year consolidated plan, that's the plan that kind of sets goals for your community development block grant funds, your home funds, all your federal funding. It, it, we're on the last year of that. So next spring, you'll adopt a new plan that again guides that funding. We've worked and found that we also have an opportunity to apply for additional funding separate from community development block grants and home called an emergency solutions grant that has the potential to provide us more sustainable funding for one of our area partners to, to look at sheltering, extreme weather sheltering and that sort of thing. The timing of that would be that we would update that plan and apply for that funding at the same time. But as an entitlement community, that looks like a really great prospect for us. So again, a very short presentation to just kind of level set where we are. Happy to answer any questions and appreciate you letting me provide that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Any questions or comments? Dr. Wilder?
Amazing. I really appreciate it. Thank you for the, you know, the buses were available this week, weekend, I believe, for, for free rides, I believe, to keep people out of the heat. So we appreciate that. You know, I, I had mentioned it some time ago about, like, one of my kids in Richmond, he's in a house down, apartment downtown where they, I think receive some subsidies of some sort, where the rent is based on his income or subsidized rent of some sort. Have we listened to those programs? I just don't know what's out here nowadays and what we can do, what we can do in some of our, and persons come for zoning questions. What, what we can do as a city council, I'm just always anxious to see because the rents are rather challenging sometimes right now. I'm just trying to see what we can do for our population who can't afford some of those challenging rent, rent fees that, see how we can work with our business partners in those areas. I just don't know what capacity we have or what is out there for a person to use.
Yes, sir. So I, I won't speak for Ms. Brown Coles, certainly she's the expert on it. But I will say that's, that's one of the services that Miriam's House and that CHIA programs provides is connections to, for persons who are having trouble making, meeting rent needs and that sort of thing. We, we use voucher programs through Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority that help with rent assistance and mortgage assistance. And several nonprofits in the area offer different programs and that connection piece gets, is part of it.
So do businesses ever, are they ever open to, I know you're looking at that profit number. Are they ever open to saying in this business unit, we're going to offer like ten percent for low income or ten percent for subsidized income? Do they ever do that? Or is that something just they do voluntarily? Or can city councils put legislation in place to ask them that? I don't know. I'm just wondering what, I'm just trying to look at solutions.
So you're, you're right now going through your comprehensive plan. And one of the things in the, in Norfolk that, that became part of what they decided was that any kind of new development, they would recess into that development expectation of that if there were a certain percentage or units that were, let's say that there were a hundred in whatever was offered, that a percentage of those would be earmarked for what you're talking about, Dr. Wilder. But that would be a council decision, if I'm not wrong, as far as, and you're right here in reviewing your comprehensive plan. Just realize that when development comes to town, that'd be an expectation and what they proffer as far as what would come out of the ground, that there'd be a certain amount of units, apartments, townhomes, what have you, that would be, to your point. And usually they can then leverage or access four percent or nine percent tax credits to help. And they're called low income tax credits to do so. And that's usually how cities that are struggling like what we are with what I'll call quote unquote affordable housing, begin to, on this side of a development deal with a developer, work through to help with what's cost, you know, the costs associated to get the project out of the ground and offset that with some low income tax credits to get housing that may be afforded to, to somebody that doesn't have the rental income that can meet the expected costs. Is that about, that's at least what I remember as far as.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in Norfolk, did you see any side effects? Like, like sort of, I know the sidewalk situation was challenging to some developers. Did you see any negative side effects from that type program? Since the city were getting some tax credits for it, kind of leverage itself out.
It was something that we had to work with the building, the building community about. Because as with anything, sometimes with those tax credit become certain expectations as to what and how they build to. So that there are certain things that may be required to get those. And so some of the builders wrestle with that because it put certain limitations or maybe guidelines that maybe they felt were more expensive than necessary for the project they were proposing. But it was a council decision that was based on what we were seeing in the city. That was that the housing disparity between those that have and those that didn't. Council felt, felt like that they needed to step into that place and that I think through those efforts, it was just an education, right? Learning and kind of, you know, working together to see how a project can be successful, even with maybe certain elements. So I remember that, right? Do you remember anything a little bit different than that as far as? But so yes, it was a growing process, but one that was really spearheaded by city council to say, this is that important for us, that we're going to recess it into our planning process that any development that comes to the city, it's of a certain kind of impact. Maybe you could, you could look at areas particularly and focus on that. That's, that was the council's decision.
I'd like to have more information. I think it's a, it's a good conversation. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to scare you in businesses away or scare the contract to where we put more pressures on them. Just something we can look into, we can evaluate and just see if it's a good fit for, for us as we make decisions for the comprehensive plan. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I believe that's some of the building, a lot of developments where they do have certain amount of units set aside for low income.
Particularly if it is a, a low income tax credit kind of development, yes.
Yes, that's all right. Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for the presentation. It definitely does help seeing that we have the conversation later on for our seven o'clock meeting. So appreciate that. Okay. All right, moving on to our business item briefings, GLTC retroactive board appointment. Alicia, Ms. Finney, if you want to introduce this.
Last spring, enclosed session by the city attorney and myself regarding a appointment that may have been prematurely made to the GLTC Board for a Centra rep. Council subsequently has asked for GLTC to come in an open session just to kind of explain what happened. And so with us today is Josh Moore, General Manager from GLTC.
Thank you, members of council, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. So regarding this appointment, our previous Centra rep had informed us rather suddenly that her boss, the CEO, had changed her job duties and that she was going to need to vacate her position rather quickly as she had taken on some additional duties. Centra had then looked internally and determined who they would like to put forward to replace her. In the past, it's been a fairly quick process. So we actually had the replacement come in and sit with us and fully expected that it would, you know, kind of be a very quick process. I think we partially got caught up last year with budgets and a lot of other stuff that was happening during that time. And so there ended up being a gap between when our central representative was appointed by council and then when she had actually previously started sitting on the GLTC board. So, so that's why we're here today is to answer any other questions you have. It was a recommendation of the city attorney that we go back and make this a retroactive appointment. During the process, none of the votes that the board took were anything other than unanimous. Other than there was one where we had one member abstain. So I'll open it to any questions.
I start for Aldi.
At least from my perspective, I'm not too sure I can get on board with a retroactive appointment. It is a little more palpable, the word, to know that the votes weren't, there weren't, there were not any votes that would be adjusted here. But I don't know if it's in the best interest of council to get into the habit of a retroactive appointment. But I'll leave that to my colleagues and our city attorney to offer more. But that would be my, my thoughts on this, this item.
Council Huggson?
Yeah, when we talked about this enclosed session, obviously we can't talk about what other people talked about, but it's obviously retroactive. You can't, you know, for example, if the, if a citizen is paying their taxes and they write the check before the taxes are due, but they don't get there to the city till after the tax payment was due, the city still charges them ten percent penalty. It's usually illegal to backdate contracts or fraudulent. You know, I don't think that's a, it's something that we should even be asked. I thought we pretty well talked about it in, in closed session that it didn't need to be coming back because just everything that you do, and especially in government, you know, when you're looking at backdating, for example, a voter, they backdate their vote. That's a felony. I mean, it's, you can't backdate a petition signature. You can't backdate lots of things. And so I'm, I'm not in favor of backdating the appointment. I think we've made the appointment now, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so that the, the person had been appointed. And it's, it shouldn't be, you know, when there is a vacancy, I think Ms. Finney has updated us on some of the items looking for vacancies and she tries to coordinate, you know, but she doesn't get all the information if somebody has to resign. So I think Ms. Finney will, will handle that. So, but I'm not in favor of backdating and making it retroactive to say that, oh, we did this back six months ago or seven months ago or whenever that time was, so.
You might have any questions or comments, Councilman Dolan?
Even asking the question, I mean, what's the rationale to backdate? Why can't we?
I think that that was simply something that council had wanted to just put the rest for us. There will be no, no effect for anything that GLTC has, has taken as far as actions, so.
So you're not asking us to backdate? Is that what you're saying?
That is the request here. Yes, to backdate to her start date.
Ms. Finney?
Yeah.
Resolutions, ordinances, motions, their legislative. Resolutions, ordinances, motions, there are legislative acts taken by city council. So there are times when, as long as the intent is clear in a legislative act, that you can do retroactive actions. So here, all this is, is cleaning up your books. All right? If you all are good having a gap when someone, uh, wasn't serving on the GLTC board, certainly that's a, a, a decision for city council. You know, it sounds like there isn't an issue from GLTC's side, but you know, really, I suppose, uh, this is something I would have asked for any type of appointment really to ensure a smooth transition from one appointment to the next. So from what I understand, there were some administrative issues that had happened between or choices that couldn't, weren't being made. I'd probably, I'd probably defer to the clerk as to why, uh, the appointment wasn't made when it was sought or brought or whatever, but really this is just to clean up. You know, the appointment records as far as having a vacancy and then the appointment. And then it's up to them whether they're going to ratify the actions taken by their board member, should council make it retroactive. But this is a legislative act. I don't, I don't see a, a big deal, so to speak, in doing something like this.
I, I guess another comment. So, you know, I think Ms. Finney, maybe you can answer this. I did, wouldn't, I don't think anybody in council probably knew that there's a vacancy or even knew this person.
February of 23, um, and without divulging what was discussed in closed session entirely, but, uh, council was maybe considering restructuring, um, who represented what in those forms. And so, um, that was heading into budget and then we just kind of sat on it. And then when we brought it to, um, that's when it came to light that maybe it was premature in her serving.
So I mean, we didn't even know of this person. Once we heard of the actual applicant, not the issue, but the applicant, once we actually heard of this applicant, I think we then appointed him or pointed her, I believe. Correct?
Correct.
Yes. We pointed her like almost.
In February of 23 and then again in March of 24.
So, but once we heard of her in March of 24 and heard that there's a vacancy, then we appointed her right then. So, so, and so what you're asking is to say, well, act as though we did it back in March of 2023 or
February, March of 23.
So a year before. So, no. Thank you.
Think, um, I think you brought up a good point. When you said, um, that this was to clean it up, right? And I don't really want to get into the habit of using the legislative process to clean up things. You know, if we make mistakes, we make errors as government, let's own it. Show the public. Make it clear what happened, like we're doing right here, right now, and then just move on. We've made the appointment. It's not going to affect any of the decisions or outcomes of what's happening with the board. And I, you know, I think it's at this point, it's kind of, um, you know, it doesn't really matter. The only purpose of doing it would be just to clean up a mess. And I don't feel like it's our job to clean up the mess of mistakes that are made.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Um, and, uh, if you don't stay around for roll call, I'll be, uh, giving a shout out to GLTC for your help for this Friday.
Okay.
So thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Rezoning B four urban commercial district to B five general business district, 1101 Fifth Street. This item will appear before council for action on July 9th, 2024. Ms. Rachel Fertaisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, as you said, the purpose of this petition is to rezone the property from B four urban commercial district to B five general business district to allow the use of the property as an auto body shop. Planning Commission recommended denial of this petition at their meeting on May 22nd. The subject property is located at 1101 Fifth Street. Uh, the structure was previously used as an auto repair and body shop. Property is situated at the intersection of Fifth Monroe and Park, which is sort of a prominent and very visible corner along this corridor. Uh, the properties are recommended for neighborhood commercial uses on our future land use map. These are intended to be primarily uses such as office, retail, personal service and restaurant uses that are scaled and designed to be compatible and serve our immediate neighborhoods. Patrons can walk, bike, or take a short drive to reach their everyday goods and services. These, uh, the property is included in the area covered by our Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan, which was adopted by city council on May 23rd, 2006. Uh, the purpose of that plan is to provide a vision and strategies for the revitalization of the Fifth Street Corridor. The property was rezoned to B six riverfront downtown, which is now known as B four urban commercial district on December 11th, 2007. The rezoning of the Fifth Street Corridor was done in, uh, sorry, following the, following the adoption and under the guidance of the Fifth Street Master Plan, nonconforming uses, uh, such as auto repair were allowed to remain as long as, uh, you know, they continued. However, the nonconforming status of this property has lapsed. The master plan provides a re, uh, vision of a revitalized Fifth Street Corridor that is walkable. Uh, and it meets the needs of its surrounding neighborhood. Several sections of the plan highlight why the B five district and the expansion of automotive uses would not be appropriate for the area. Specifically, the requested B five district is the least restrictive and most intense commercial district. And that the abundance of automotive uses that previously dominated this corridor should not be expanded. Uh, rezoning the property back to B five would mean that those uses that had contributed to Fifth Street's decline could return. Planning Commission spent some time discussing how Fifth Street has seen a lot of investment and positive change in the last 20 years and how that is attributable to the master plan and because we have continued to follow these recommendations and the vision set forth in the plan. Um, the public investment in this area has transformed the corridor uh, from one that looked like this, which is located just three blocks from the property that we're talking about today, into a concept that looked like this and a reality that looks like this now. And these improvements have spurred private investment. For example, here's a very similar intersection located at Fifth and Court Streets, which includes a former auto repair shop. If you can see across, uh, that building in the far left. Another view in 2014, after the streetscape was completed. And today you can see the new construction that has taken place around this intersection as well as the reinvestment in the former auto repair building, which is now a co-working space. In summary, a lot of progress, progress has been made on Fifth Street over the last 20 years. Uh, thanks to council's commitment and vi, and vision in adopting and following our Fifth Street Master Plan as well as, um, the commitment of the private sector who took notice of that vision and agreed that this was an area worth investing in. Uh, zoning is a key component of that plan. And the B five district allows more intense uses, commercial, uh, commercial uses than our B four, which is what it's currently zoned. Um, those include uses like heavy equipment rental, solid waste collection and towing yards. These uses are not appropriate in this setting. Um, as an alternative, the auto repair use could be allowed as a conditional use permit upon approval from city council if the applicant were to elect to, uh, request that conditional use permit. To rezone the property could potentially disrupt this positive momentum that the corridor has experienced. Um, Fifth Street may not feel these negative effects of one rezoning overnight or even in a year, but it may have long-term detrimental consequences. Uh, because approval of this rezoning may signal that the vision has been abandoned and that other similar rezonings in this area might be appropriate, even though staff would not support them. Uh, as I mentioned, Planning Commission recommended denial of this petition at their May 22nd meeting. Uh, this meeting will return for a city council public hearing at your July 9th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Captain Hugson?
Um, you know, as I look at this, uh, and I read the, the report and I eat, read that, that it had been automotive related for, since basically cars were invented about a hundred years ago. And I look at Adams Motor Company, that's like a tenth of a mile away. Adams Motor Company was one of the country's best Jeep Chrysler dealerships. I, I look at this area now where, uh, Dollar General are, uh, opened up and now is closing. I look at somebody that has had, uh, you know, wanting to operate a business and that used to always be allowed until there was a, uh, a change, you know, in a big document. Sometimes when we do a comprehensive plan, um, we've always heard from Mr. Martin that comprehensive plans aren't parcel specific. When you do a comprehensive plan, lots of times you're kind of looking at the pretty pictures. You're not really thinking about, uh, how that actually the zoning would impact. And so when I see this and I see that a, a, a person that has been trying to run a business and Mr. Kerr had glowing reports from other folks, uh, you know, at the planning commission meeting. Just because we changed the, the, the plan, the Fifth Street plan. You know, I heard, I heard it spoke of earlier about, you know, so excited downtown to have that Fifth and Federal being opened by, uh, a, a black gentleman. Well, I think this car dealership or car business is going to be operated by a black gentleman on Fifth Street. There's a tenth of a mile away going up Park Avenue not far away. We just approved, um, I think, I can't remember the vote exactly, but it was definitely a majority where we approved allowing that person to get their, uh, back to the ability to, to B five where they could then sell cars. I know there's been changes. I know there's the pos, the possibility of negative repercussions, but I think property rights are, are pretty important. And when it's been used for that for, you know, a hundred years as the states and it was changed because there was, uh, a change in the zoning. I mean, normally if somebody has a house and then we change it to a business use just because, you know, a government fiat says we're going to change it. I don't think we kick the people out of the house. I mean, there's usually a nonconforming use where they can stay there or it should be up to them to say, we want to have that zoning changed. So when I see this, I, I, I'm inclined to, uh, for us to really dig into it and see what we can do to expand another business. We heard from the downtown Lynchburg Association a minute ago where they were giving grants and giving checks for $20,000 for someone to start a business. Well, here's somebody that already has a business that we're not having to give a $20,000 check to start a business, but to actually expand on their business that they're currently doing. So, um, a, and to me, it, it does seem, uh, from a zoning and the land use perspective, especially how that whole corridor, you know, again, Adams Motor Company, oh my, I mean, that whole thing was uh, one of the best car dealerships, Jeep and Chrysler dealerships in the country. And so a, as it sits now, I don't see how we could deny this request. And I, hopefully we can come up with some positive solutions, maybe in the CUP or something. But as presented, I, I'm, I'm inclined to disagree. So thank you.
Anyone else? Council missions?
So just to be, just to be clear, looking at the, at the notes, uh, is it a body shop or selling cars or both? What's, what's, what's the plan?
So the gentleman that, uh, is leasing or renting this property from the property owner is currently operating a car wash. They have a nonconforming status for car wash. He wants to be able to do auto body repair and, uh, that nonconforming status is, is lapsed. However, if they were to rezone to B five, auto sales would be allowed. My understanding is that individual does not intend to use this for auto sales. But if, if it were rezoned, it, it could be.
So, and then, and then the next question I have about that is what, what's the closest body shop?
The closest body shop?
Yeah, the closest body shop.
Uh, I believe that would be the directly across the street. There's a nonconforming, um, I don't know if it's a body shop, but it's certainly an auto repair shop.
Yeah. And, and you know, is that the only place close by? Cause you know, competition is also going to make things better down there as well, right? So, you know, we've got some auto businesses that are down there. I'm inclined to say let's, you know, move forward and make something work so that we can expand this. Cause there's a lot of people, it's a very dense part of the city that need those services. And if we can have competing businesses that are able to, you know, work with each other to, to compete and improve the quality of services provided to those very dense and populated neighborhoods, that's a win. That's just where I'm at. Just kind of a thought. I, I don't like the idea of restricting the ability of somebody to do something in that, that area. Cause you know, like you said, right now, it's a, it's a car wash. So they're doing the can wash detail. Is that what it is?
Yes.
And they just want to expand on that.
So the, um, the Fifth Street Master Plan, um, called out, uh, that abundance of auto uses, which some, some are still remaining today as, as nonconforming. As something that the neighborhood wanted and, and the plan was a very grassroots neighborhood driven, resident driven, um, plan, uh, but that people wanted the street to function, um, as it did. Say in its heyday, I guess you could call it, where it would support people with a wide range of needs, uh, wide range of goods and services, places to shop, play, stay, um, I just a place where people could get their daily needs met, um, which the previous automotive dominant uses, um, with that, with an abundance of those, you have a, a lack of the other.
Yeah. And I, I understand that.
Sure.
And I get that, but how long have we been at it with the history master plan now? Two decades, something along those.
Roughly.
And it's changed tremendously, but at the, at the same time with that, you can't force businesses to come in and you know, if there's businesses that are lacking that they're looking for, we can't force them to come in. Somebody's got to come in and see that it's an investment worth making. So, um, you know. Does that, does that make sense?
Interesting.
Yeah. But that's where I'm at, but I appreciate the information and.
Just context.
Yep. Thank you.
Dr. Wilder?
Is the bid is coming because it had changed the ownership? Is that why? Is what, was it grandfathered in?
So the ownership has not really changed. Um, it's formerly Mr. Kerr's, I believe it's, his family is the one that's still running it. So it's changed slightly, but it's, it's still the same family.
Oh, so it's still under, I didn't realize that. No, it's still under the same ownership.
Yes. And, um, they are leasing to a gentleman who wants to do the auto repair. Which, because it's been more two, more than two years, um, since auto repair was done there. It's no longer considered nonconforming.
Oh.
Or, or grandfathered is what some.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilman Hudson?
Just wanted, since you mentioned the, the two years, you know, uh, recognize that, you know, again, downtown Lynchburg association, last time they're here, they talked about the huge vacancies in downtown storefronts. Things are coming back. Things were lots of vacancies, especially with COVID. I mean, things happened. And so, uh, just because it hadn't been used for two years, um, especially when it was kind of thrust upon them because of, you know, things kind of forced to be shut down. So I don't, I don't know if I like that argument just because it hasn't been operating as a, a, a car place in two years that it, so, I don't.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your help tonight or this afternoon, almost tonight. Okay. Moving on, uh, draft annual action plan, community development block grant, CDBG and home program. This item will appear before council for action on July 9th, 2024. Ms. Melva, Melva Walker. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hi.
Vice Mayor and members of city council. You've received the draft fiscal year 2025, program year 2024 annual action plan. This is the fifth and final plan within the 24 five-year consolidated plan for the community development block grant and home program. The required 30-day public comment period for the plan began on June 7th and will conclude at the public hearing scheduled to come before you on July 9th. The plan outlines the needs, goals and objectives for community development, including housing and non-housing goals. The plan includes all of the required components and the community development advisory committee recommended CDPG and home program, program projects approved by city council at the public hearing conducted on June 11th. The required 30-day public comment period for the plan began on June 7th and will conclude at the public hearing scheduled to come before you on July 9th.
No? Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. The national opioid litigation settlement, Kroger opioid related claims, Mr. Matthew Friedman.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council. This item comes to you as a now, uh, third installment of the national opioid litigation settlement. That is specific to the MOU that other localities and, and our locality have with the attorney general's office, the Commonwealth of Virginia. Those previous. Um, those previous settlements that we've entered into, as I understand it, have had a hundred percent participation. And I know the Commonwealth is also looking for a hundred percent participation with this settlement with Kroger and its affiliated entities. Um, certainly I recommend the adoption of this resolution when it comes up, uh, at your first July meeting. Um, this settlement, as I understand it with Kroger is a, uh, in total, a $1.2 billion settlement. So it's, it's, it's pretty incredible. Um, and certainly the amount that the city will recover as well as the Commonwealth of Virginia and, and the rest of localities depends on the amount of participation by the localities around the state. So something I, I did want to note, and I put this in your, uh, agenda summary is as of June 17th, 2024, uh, the city's finance department had indicated the city had received 502,291 dollars and 20 cents from the national opioid litigation settlements. Additionally, the city has received a grant from the, uh, Virginia opioid abatement authority in the amount of, um, 1,946,372 dollars for the cooperative partnership for Horizon Crisis Receiving Center. So but for you all, uh, agreeing to participate in that MOU, we wouldn't have had access to those resources to, uh, deal with, uh, the plagues of the opioid, uh, epidemic that, uh, affects Virginia as well as the city. So I, I think that's wonderful. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Wonderful. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you so much. All right. We'll move on to the rules of procedure organizational meeting. This item will appear before council for action on July 9th, 2024, Ms. Alicia Finney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as council knows, the first meeting in July is in reserve for organizational meeting. Uh, that is a time where you've all set forth your calendar year for the next year. So for 2025, you do this by re adopting your rules of procedure. So we'll be taking that up the July 9th meeting, as the mayor said. Um, staff are proposing a few changes to the schedule. So, um, in March, we hold our work sessions in the second floor training room. So to align with the budget cycle, we're proposing that we move the fourth Tuesday all the way through April and the work session, for the work session in the second floor training room. Uh, the next change with the calendar is meeting, of course, the July and December, the second Tuesday, but moving on August, the fourth Tuesday, that would allow you all to have a longer summer hiatus. Um, and then we are suggesting that you add language to the prohibited conduct section. Um, this includes items that address like bringing pickets and blocking entrances and exits. This was recommended by the chief of police and fire marshal's office. So those are all the staff directed, uh, changes that we are suggesting, and we are open to hear anything that you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Thank you, Alicia. I understand the intent of the changes for the changes here, the prohibited conduct. I'll read it for the folks at home. Uh, the changes would say, uh, it'd be prohibited to bring pickets, stakes, poles, staffs or the like in the council chamber. Next item, display signs, flags, poster, place cards or the like in the manner that obstructs the view of a meeting, of a meeting attendee in council chamber. Next item, block entrances, exits or doors in the council chamber. Of course, number 11, I don't, I, I don't really necessarily have a problem with any of them. However, I want to make sure we're applying this as, um, intentionally as possible for the desired outcome. For item number nine, if someone had a cane, an elderly person had a cane, technically, would that fall under this?
So, um, what, what I would submit is,
I guess what I'm driving out is like, I get the intent, but maybe we could go after the desired outcome for what it's used for, not necessarily the object. If, if there's anything here that you are dis- that is affixed to a sign, affixed to a flag, you know, whatever, I think it could be spruced up just a little bit more to be that more specific. And that way we're not saying, hey, you can't carry a walking stick in, for example. Yeah. I, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm literally just playing this out. Um, I'm just saying, I think it could be a little bit more specific. Item number 10 speaks to it a little bit more. But for example, you know, if you're holding up a sign that is blocking the view of others, that obviously that sign is not perma- permissible, but you don't need to ban the sign. If you understand my, what I'm saying, I think there's a more creative way to write it.
Would, and I'm just spitballing it here.
So am I.
If I'm, if I'm meeting it, what if I was, if I was to edit the language to say, bring, uh, pickets, stakes, poles, staffs or the like affixed to signs or other posters, flags, et cetera, into the council chamber? Make it more clear that it's like you had said, being affixed to some type of.
Potentially if, if you and I want to connect ahead of two weeks from now, that's fine. But generally that's kind of where my mind was like, I want to make sure we're, the intended outcome is what we're writing about, not let, not that this isn't, but I just want to be very, very uh, laser focused on that. Maybe we can be more creative.
Council missions?
Quite frankly, I think all of this is completely unnecessary because of one, number nine is going to mean that these can't be here because the city would be bringing poles into the council chamber. So we'd have to get rid of these flags. Right. Um, not supported that, I think a majority of us would also not support that. I, I just think that it's, um, I got an issue with that. Display signs, flags, posters, placards, kind of issue with that too. This is the public square. This is where people come to address their government. And we are borderlining on major, in my opinion, first amendment violations when we start telling people that you can't display signs or flags, you know, what if somebody walks in and displays a flag on their shirt? Is that a violation of the rules of procedure? Cause that's a display of a flag. Right? So that's why, uh, we don't need more rules. There's already enough rules. Blocking entrances, exits or doorways of the council chamber. Um, I would imagine that that's probably already a fire code violation, right?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So then why do we need to add kind of almost a rule that is irrelevant because there's already a state code that says you can't do that. So it, it's just, all of this is completely unnecessary. Um, and I'm, you know, people have rights to come in here and, and display what they want to display, say what they want to say and do what they want to do as far as that's concerned. And we work for them, you know? I don't think we need to be shutting down how people express themselves inside these chambers.
Nine, we can easily just strike it. You know, when I read, when I read that, I agree that, you know, the, the original law giver carried a staff with Moses. So I think we can easily strike number nine. Um, number 10, if the intent isn't the displaying of the things, but the intent is to, the second half of that sentence is to obstruct the view of others. That's where I could say that yes, we could probably do number 10. Um, because you're, it's not the, the displaying, it's the obstructing the view. Um, it's like, you know, so that I think I could, but I think we could easily strike number nine. Number 11, um, that really isn't a council rule of procedure. I think if we put it as a council rule of procedure, then that takes it away from the fire chief's hands or the police chief's hands because it's a council procedure. So that would be incumbent then upon the mayor to then, uh, get a, uh, the, the bailiff or whatever, the, the security in order to change, you know, remove the folks in front. So I don't think that should be in a council rule of procedure. It's obviously a building code. It's obviously a fire code. It's obviously, we have policemen that are sitting here making sure that people aren't in front. So, um, I think we could stay with number 10, um, strike number nine completely. It, it, it just, I think it's again, number 11. It's already there. I, I don't think it should be then turned to, you know, cause quite frankly, it's not a fun thing, you know? Madam Mayor, you may disagree, but I don't think it's a fun thing when people cheer and you got to gavel them down, is it? It, it's not fun. And so now you're going to be saying, hey, get away from the door. I see you over there. Move. It's violation of rule number 11, five, four, eight. I don't think that's going to be a good thing. And so I, but number, number 10, I think, I think we could easily go with.
Um, Sir Freeman, I have a question about number nine because since you said that this was recommended from Chief Zudema. Um, obviously I would guess that that is a safety issue. And I don't think he's concerned that we're going to take those poles and we're going to use them as weapons. So I would think that this applies to the people that come into chamber, not the people sitting here at the dais. So, um, I want to make that clear. So with this being his recommendation for people, the public coming in here, um, could you maybe elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. So obviously the con- the concern is not, uh, council's display of, uh, the city, the American or Virginia flag. The concern is where, uh, God forbid, something happens in council chambers and someone has a picket and uses it as a weapon because it's connected to the sign, you know, or that multiple individuals have pickets and use them as, as a weapon. Um, that, that is what the concern is. So, um, you know, as, uh, this council knows, the presiding officer, whoever it may be, has discretion in applying its rules of procedure. So if someone who is, uh, disabled were to come, you know, into the council chamber with a staff or a walker or, or a cane, you know, I, I find it hard to believe that the presiding officer would say, look, you're in violation of rule five point four, you know, number nine of the rules of procedure and, uh, ask them to, to get rid of their cane, their walker, et cetera. So, but certainly I think it's worth, um, clearing up that language a little bit to say that, you know, it can't be affixed to signs. So there's no, uh, confusion that someone may come in because you may have someone come in, you know, that has to walk with a stick that's not old or doesn't appear disabled. So I think, um, I could work on the language some to, uh, narrow that language to be specific to the display of signs or placards or other things. And I, I do think that's a good suggestion from the vice mayor.
Yeah. I think my thought would be just y'all were in a whole different time with, with some of the things that we've seen, you know, in our, our chamber are people that are exercising, obviously their constitutional rights, which is fine and we support that. Um, but nationally we're seeing some pretty heated things happening. And if, if our, uh, chief is recommending us, um, look at additional safety, um, layers of safety for our fellow, um, citizens that are coming in, taking part in their right to be here and, and be part of the local government. We are looking out for all of them, the ones that come here to participate in their freedoms and those that are, you know, here to be parts of other, um, you know, expression, if they're here to be part of public comment or participate in some other way. So I think it's fair to just consider all of these things. Um, and, and again, the climate that we're currently in and look at it from all perspectives. Um, we're not trying to limit anything here. We're just trying to look at safety issues. So this, number 10, again, it's not, you can't bring in your flag, signs, placards, posters. That's not what it's saying. It's saying when you bring them in here, don't block the view of the people around you. Cause we have had situations, as y'all know recently, where people have brought in posters and they have lifted them high and the people behind them can't see. So this is just a respect issue is if you bring them in, just don't hold them where people behind can't see. They're, they're here to watch the practice of local government, which is their right. So that's all number 10 is asking. Number nine, obviously if we clean up the language, um, is about just safety because if there was a heated exchange between two groups in here, that could happen. We do not want to put anyone in this room in danger. I think that, that would be my guess because of the climate that we're facing that possibly, you know, I can't read Chief Zuma's mind, but potentially he could have been coming from. Yes, Councilman Huggson.
Nine. So if the argument is then for safety, um, you know, you can look at national trends. You can look at just the, you know, assaults and murders and whatnot in Lynchburg. Um, over the last decade, I can't think of anybody who's, uh, you know, was assaulted by a stake, a picket, a pole or a staff. Um, but weapons. And so if, if I think it's a somewhat of a red herring to say it's for safety. Um, you know, where most people are injured or murdered or assaulted are using guns, knives, uh, clubs or whatever. Um, so th- this is, I think is more geared towards, you know, protest or displaying than it is with regarding the safety of a picket. I mean, lots of people, we lowered the concealed weapon permit fee from $50 a year down to 15. People have concealed weapons to protect themselves. Um, I, I don't think that this is a, a safety issue when somebody has a picket or a, a pole or a staff, or whatever word you want to say. Fortunately, we are now having officers in here, which is, is very good. And they're in the back and in the front and they're observing and they got cameras outside when they watch people coming in. And, um, you know, if somebody has malicious intent, uh, you know, I'd much rather have their hands full with a picket than have their hands full with an A R or something, you know, so. I, I, I see number nine, uh, i- is not really a safety issue, but it is a first amendment issue. And I think we, we really kind of addressed those issues at number 10, saying have the signs, just don't obstruct. So.
Okay. Council missions?
Kind of dovetailing all that. You know, just because the police chief says, hey, do X, doesn't mean I support it. You know, if he came in here and said, we need to repeal the second amendment sanctuary, I would say absolutely not. Citizens have a right. Um, with that, you know, I'm also thinking about, when have I seen pickets, stakes, poles, staffs or the like in here? And there's only one time that I can think of that I've seen it. And we had Israeli flags from corner to corner, from front to back in here because the Judeo-Christian part of our community came out in a resounding support for, for an issue. And this to me kind of feels almost like, hey, you know, there was that guy in the back with the full size flagpole. Probably shouldn't be able to do that. Be able to use that as a weapon. Um, I, I just don't, I don't buy it. Um, I get it. I understand the logic here. I just don't think it's necessary. And I, I can see the part about number 10 and maybe having some kind of language that would just say this, you know, people shouldn't be obstructing other views in some way, shape or form. Adding that in, in, in the rules of procedure, I could, I could support that. That's where I'm at.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, we're forgetting a number of occasions. Um, number of angry school parents asking for council to support funding and protecting funding to keep their schools open. There were plenty of objects up in the air, asking us to do that for weeks on end and council still declined to have a unanimous vote to that effect. Yet, uh, we're intentionally forgetting those items. I think we've hashed this out far enough. We have a path for our next meeting and we can, I would recommend we continue the discussion then.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts on any of the other recommended changes?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, we're smart enough to see a threat. And as I said, we have officers in the room. If this become a public safety issue, we deal with it.
Madam Mayor, if I may. Sure.
Not leave with the vice mayor loudly and clearly, um, in Chief Zudema offering this, um, when you pull a permit, uh, first amendment permit to protest or to voice your speech on that permit, um, it limits your ability to use or use signs or have these equipment that's affixed to them for, for purposes to make sure that it's a peaceful display. And I think in thinking about best practice to maybe Mr. Missions comment and, um, Vice Mayor Faraldi, while limited or unique, it's something that happened. And so in those circumstances and thinking, I think Councilman Huggson brought up the point of, um, council be, being put in a place or position that has to be reflective to what's happening here in the, in the chambers. If what's expected is that you can, not unlike standing on the corner on 12th street or something dissimilar, when you pulled a first amendment permit, be able to display whatever you're displaying without those things affixed to it. I think. I think the, our police department is sharing a best practice that they have seen in kind of making sure that those things go smooth. And so I think in Chief Zudema offering this as a, something to consider is reflective on the, the instances that we have. And so again, it's up for your consideration, but I thought I'd provide that added context and maybe the language in the permit. I haven't looked at it in quite a while. And what it says is to how best to, you know, exhibit your First Amendment rights. That's, I think, why Chief Zudema had offered this little element here. So just for your consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Moving on to roll call. Dr. Wilder.
Ms. Nolan, go first.
Sure. Councilman Nolan, you go ahead.
No. No? Okay, sure. Yeah. Well, I just want to reflect that our community suffered a tremendous loss this, with the passing of Jane White last week. She truly was a pioneer, an innovator and a dedicated community bridge builder. Her hand touched so many things from the preservation of history, spearheading the restoration of the Old City Cemetery, restoration of Yoder Community Center, co-founder of Friends of Tinbridge Hill, mentoring young folks, and the list goes on and on. She was really intentional in doing the, the right thing for decades as she celebrated her love for this city. Our community has truly benefited from her dedication and her underlying commitment. Jane has left footprints all over our community for us to enjoy and to preserve. And we're going to miss a good friend of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to echo that as well. Jane White was a wonderful member of our community. And I'm so thankful for a lot of historical markers. I mean, Lynchburg is so, I guess, I would say famous for all of our markers that we have here because of Jane White, especially the African-American community. For example, the one on Fifth Street, that's the Fifth Street Baptist Church. It was the first African-American veterinarian in the United States. He received a doctorate, it was in Lynchburg. He went to, God, school in New York. I can't think of it anyway. But again, it was just all the amazing history was something, was just amazing. So we're so thankful for Jane White, her legacy. And her legacy will continue on. So we're thankful for Jane and praying for our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Huggson?
Yeah. Anybody who was here a long time ago, right when you got here, one of the first visits was City Cemetery with Jane White. And just a, just a southern genteel classy lady. I mean, that was, and it was always funny. What we used to say, you know, didn't matter if you're Democrat or Republican. When, when Jane White brought something, you voted for it. So that's what happened. So.
Councilor Missions? Councilor Taylor?
Yes, I also spent time with Ms. White. I worked with her over on, uh, Hutcheson Early Learning Center, the cemetery over there in White Rock Hill. She, she was one of the first ones uncovering the tombstones over there. And I also worked with her on Ann Spencer House. And she, she was very, very. She loved history. And I love history. So we, we had that in common.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Faraldi?
No. So I was asked, I got a few, quite a few emails about Ms. White. And so I thought it was appropriate to have someone that knew her personally, and I looked quite a few, you did. And I, but I, Councilwoman Dolan, I had asked to do a personal tribute to her. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate that. Okay, so tonight I want to highlight the midnight basketball program because we're leading into our final Friday. And there's some special things I want to give to, to everyone before this Friday comes. So first of all, I want to thank the city because the, we've been using the Armory and it's been fantastic. And the program, I mean, we couldn't be more thankful for how it's gone. It's really been successful for everyone. And, and, and the community has just come together so beautifully. It's just been really exciting to see everybody just come on board. I want to thank Dr. Wilder and the Jubilee Center. I want to thank Fellowship of Christian Athletes. They've been donating the powerade to all the kids and athletes that have been playing. The LPD, you've been awesome providing, you know, security, the fire department, you've been there, making sure everybody's safe and, and protected as far as injuries, which we haven't had anything, gosh, thank God. And, um, you know, Parks and Rec, you've been amazing, Wyatt Woody and all of your people. Lacey, Nat Marshall, y'all have been awesome, just covering all the costs that haven't been covered. Forty Ways Coalition, y'all have been great. Liberty University, they're going to be covering some great swag for us to give away. We have, this Friday, we're doing a three-point, a shooting contest and a dunk contest. University of Lynchburg, Hillary Scott, Coach Scott's been there helping out. From Heritage High School, we've had Coach Cruz, he's been helping. And this Friday, oh, I wanted Josh Moore to stay. We, one of the barriers that's kept some of our kids from being able to come has been transportation. So GLTC is actually going to provide a special bus this Friday at midnight to take the kids home that have not been able to come the last two Fridays because they wouldn't have been able to have a ride. So thank you to GLTC for stepping up. And this has been exact, a perfect example of how the community can come together to serve the youth. And we've had safe, two safe Fridays. The kids have had so much fun, the young adults, I'll say sixteen to twenty-two. And it's just been a wonderful example how Lynchburg can come together and I just love it. So thank you to everyone and let's have a great final midnight basketball this Friday. And, and the community has shown up to watch. I mean, it's been great basketball, but I mean, you have filled the stands to cheer the players on and we've had a great time. So please come and cheer them on this Friday. It's going to be really fun. With that, I'm going to wait and I'll do my, my highlight next, next meeting because we need to go into closed session. So consideration of closed meeting to discuss the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the city would be adversely affected pursuant to section two point two, three, seven, one, one, A six of the City of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. The topic of the closed session being specific to the renewal of a current city franchise. Consideration of a closed meeting to discuss appointments for vacancies to the Historic Preservation Commission, City Employee Appeals Board, Martin Luther King Junior Lynchburg Committee Counsel, Museum Advisory Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, Economic Development Authority, Central Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Plan, Greater Lynchburg Transit Company, Towing Advisory Board pursuant to section two point two dash three, seven, one, one, A one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting? Have a second? Any further discussion? Now, can we vote? Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilor Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. We are now in closed session.